Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for each and every board member. We thank you for the decisions they would make concerning our students in our county and all our members and employees in this county. So we bless you with favor and long life for them and in their days. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its round.
I'd like to call to order the meeting, this special call to board meeting with the Henry County Board of Education. Monday, June 28, 2021, at 5:00 PM with the central office in Abbeville. A local call that showed that all of the board members are present. Item number one is recommend that the board approve the written agenda. Motion by Mr. Watson. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Record show that you know us. Item two, recommend the board approve the personnel recommendation attached here to Exhibit A and made part hereof. You get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wiggins. We have a second. Second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion?
These three have, are asking to resign to take positions at schools that are closer to where they lead.
This man, you talk math in middle school, right?
Number three was a math teacher.
Number two.
I mean, I'm sorry, number two.
So, if your math teacher is not a classroom, now I heard a math teacher move. And we have about seventy-five percent of the way from school. My biggest problem is that they're paying math and English teachers. So, it raises a question, why is it that we are not able to keep any math teachers? And why, the ones that we do get are not certified?
She is going to a place that's closer to home.
My biggest question is why are we not able to keep any math teachers? We got seventy-five percent of them. And these, one after another, after another leaves. And that brings about a question of something else involved.
So, this is a resignation that she's, and that's what I have seen from those that have resigned under my tenure as superintendent is that they're looking for a place closer to home.
And it used to be seventy percent.
Believe it or not, it's been here.
It used to be seventy-five percent. Turn over, Ray. Like I say, there's a bigger question than yours. I know that's one of them that they use.
I would have to look back at that to see if it's seventy-five percent.
If it is seventy-five percent, he's hired thirty-nine, that's the people that he's hired, thirty-nine and twenty that are gone. The principal I'm talking about. So I'm just saying, it raises a question. And I think that's the right response, but, but you know, when you go out in the world and you hear something different, they don't want to work in school. I just say it brings a bigger question.
And like I said, the, all three of these were wanting to move closer to home. So I'm, I'm gonna deal with the ones that are in tonight.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Record show that item two was passed unanimously. Item three, recommend the board approve the personnel recommendation attached here to Exhibit B and made part hereof. You get a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Bush. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wiggins. Any discussion?
She's decided to retire.
She give a reason?
She's had, she's just, she's said that it was for reasons with her family, such as, you know, her grandchildren right now are in need and things of that nature.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Record show that item three was approved unanimously. Item four, recommend the board approve the personnel recommendation attached here to Exhibit C and made part hereof.
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Bush. We have a second. Second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion?
In hiring these at this time, as you can see, number one, will have to attend training the week of the fourth, and it's before our regular call board meeting. So he has to attend that training, and it is required for that position. And so he would need to be approved, if possible, before that training. And then two, three, and four, you know, I have talked about the instructional coaches, and these would be people that we would have to replace within system. And then number five was the only, he was the only certified one that showed for the, for the interview.
We gonna have to vote all these in one month? Or can we have the privilege of voting each one individually, since they all bring something just?
I'm, I'm fine with you voting individually.
What I'll do is I'll call each board member's name, and then you vote down the line one through six, how you wanna vote. Just keep the tables. Any other questions? All right, Ms., Ms. Wiggins?
Yay on all.
Yay on all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Five no. Yes, I'm all, the rest of them.
Five no, yes on the rest. Okay, Ms. Bush?
Yes on all.
Yes on all, Mr. Watson?
Yes on all.
Yes on all, and I, McCrany, but yes on all.
Can I make one statement?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're voting on these teachers, and we, I see some great ones, you know, first. What, Ms. Campbell, what are the restrictions that we can't see, hear, and know anything about the people who apply for these positions? When I see one of these candidates here got a catalog full of, full of stuff here that we knew what the situation was, I don't know that we would, we would vote for. I mean, what restricts us from knowing more about these candidates?
Because that's administrative. The board's duties is both, is as a fiduciary and as policymakers. The superintendent's duty is administrative. So she would handle all of the administrative issues and make recommendations to you.
Okay.
Now, if you have, just simple example, you know, you know somebody is, you know, a constant gambler and has a bad reputation in the community, then it's up to you to vote no or abstain on that particular one. You couldn't discuss it because if you discussed it, that means you're having a hearing about that particular person without giving that particular person notice, which would open the board up to liability. So that's why you leave those type situations to the administrative, the administrator, which is your superintendent, to make recommendations.
So the end result is we know nothing. The board didn't know nothing. The superintendents are restricted from sharing any information with us. Right?
Now, what, what, what information would you want?
I would want to know his history. What's going on? I mean, here's a, here's a truckload of somebody's been abused.
Well, yeah, she's, she's, she's not allowed to bring somebody's history.
That's all I wanna know. I'm just saying.
But if a, if a board member had a question, you would question superintendent.
Right, and if it's something that is good name and character, that you would need to go into executive session about, you know, you could certainly do that. This is a call meeting, there's no executive session on the agenda, you cannot add one. But, you know, sometimes there, and, and a lot of school districts will have the executive session before personnel. But if you have something that's good name and character, that is critical, that the board needs to know before voting, then, you know, you can do that in executive session. But it's still, that executive session is still not for you to debate back and forth. It's just for, you know, if you have some critical information that's gonna impact, you know, dealing with their general reputation and character, that, you know, must come before, you know, that can't happen. But you still have to be careful of having a hearing without giving notice.
Okay, so the last, one last little statement. Superintendent could share this information with us if she wanted to, she chooses not to, do the executive session. Right?
In executive session, you're, you're restricted. You're not going back in executive session to discuss certain issues. It would really have to be something critical that the board needs to be made aware of before they vote. But you, you're still on shaky ground.
Well, I'm totally surprised the superintendent didn't do an executive session and let us know these by here, that I think the board should know. And that's all I got to say.
Okay. That is all of item five, I'm sorry, item four. Item five, recommend the board approve the at-risk coordinator, alternative school director position to be contracted as a principal position. You get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Wiggins. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bush. Any discussion?
I was gonna do this at work session, but we are already advertising this position, and so we would need to change. That position closes on July 1st, because we've, we've run for two weeks. And so I believe that the alternative school we have had at one time, they were a principal, and they took on duties such as, when you think about at-risk, you think about attendance. And so we would look at them running the truancy. We would also look at them as far as our RTI, which is our response to instruction, and that encompasses behavior side, and it encompasses grade side, or the academic. So if a child is failing, then they would go on to the response to instruction. If a child has behavioral issues, then they would go into response to instruction. So this person would be over those duties where they're not at this time. And I think when we're talking about someone being over at-risk, you should look at all of the factors that would, that would consider at-risk. And so with that being said, I feel that this is a very important position, and if we want to do this right, I think that going back to being a principal contract rather than being the eleven month.
Well, I, I, I applaud you for wanting to, I mean, I did alternative school for three years, so I know what this brings and takes, personally though. And I applaud you for wanting to improve alternative school by making the administrator or principal or whatever, I applaud you. But that's about ten percent, that's ninety percent enough of improving the alternative school. But my question is, why are we gonna, you know, go ten percent and improve it and just forget about the other ninety percent? We need to be good, we need schools, we need all this stuff, you know? We need a lot, there's ninety percent more stuff if you really wanna improve it. Because right now, and people have justified us over and over and over, these are, just from their, their kids are not getting their work, they're not being taught the work. So to me, if you're reaching that improvement, you don't need to stop at ten percent, you can even do the other ninety, because kids are not learning the thing.
I agree with, with Mr. Davidson. I think we, I think we all agree that now's the time to get, make our alternative school the best that it can be. With the technology that we have, there's no reason why these students can't be sitting in alternative school and in a live classroom, whatever classroom they were supposed to be in back at school that they were in. We have, we have the money, we have the wherewithal, and whoever we put in this position needs to be somebody that is very technically savvy, got some forward-thinking ideas and ways to make this thing better, so that these kids, if they come to alternative school, they sit down at their desk, and they, they log into their classrooms, and they're in the classroom where they would want to be at that time during the day. And if we do that, then, then I think we'll be doing a good job.
And I think that this has to be the first step.
I agree.
If we're going to get a qualified person, we have to make it attractive.
I agree.
So this is the first step.
I think, I think, I can say, Mr. McCrany really, 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 well, really playing on the head, because all the years I was there, I've had the frustration, and I plead, plead, plead to improve. And since I've been on the board, I've been pleading to improve. Mr. McCrany and you, I think, you know, if you follow through with it, it'll be, you know, it's a great, great thing.
How many kids, students at a time are usually in alternative school?
Typically about twelve.
We've got, we've got the wherewithal and the knowledge and the resources and the money to set up an alternative school for twenty, twenty students that can be state of the art.
And that means, Mr. McCrany, they're absolute, they don't miss anything unless they're caught.
Exactly.
You can go back and review all you need, you know?
The whole world has gone remote.
And, and we still have?
And we still, we can do it too. Yeah, I agree.
And, and, and just let me make another statement. Please, and I plead with this, this board meeting, every board meeting in the state of Alabama is going Google meeting, going Google. So why don't we go? Because the virus is out there, the people of Abbeville, they said, they demand that this thing is filmed and put on all over. They want the news going on, but they're not gonna walk in here with this virus stuck in like it is. So why don't we do what ninety-nine percent of other schools in the state do? And that's put it on Google meeting. I just got the business of Barbara Kambers and Charles Hilson's, Goche's board meetings, they're filling up, it's all on Google meeting, unless you have something that you want to hide.
All right, any other, any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
It's a big step. I think it's in the right direction. All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, item five, it's approved unanimously since it's special call to state, any discussions that you want here. Okay, I'm leaving, but I'm not leaving that. I'm going to, I'm going to an apple watering sewer board meeting. Good luck.
But I, I need a couple minutes to, to talk about somebody. Can you grant me a couple minutes to talk?
Can we do it toward the end of the work session?
Well, I'd rather not, but I, you are my partner.
I, I'm, I would prefer to allow them, because several of them have five, six-hour drives, and so I would like to be respectful of them.
I'll do about two.
Well, that's, because I'm gonna give you your time, but let's do it at the end, if that's okay. So the first thing with the Snyder electric is that you all have talked about cyber safety and that, you know, having those measures of building our cyber and our internet infrastructure, so I'm gonna have them come and speak.
Children has some kind of problems. You know, we might not see it, we might not know it. When I first got my first report, I was like, oh my goodness, you know, because it's somebody I had already worked with. And it's sometimes just a repeating cycle, but I got the opportunity to go back, work with them, see if I could put anything in place to help these kids. There's a lot of kids in the Henry County school system that has severe problems, and then there's some that, you know, you would think it's not, it's not a problem to us, but to that child it is. And a lot of times, school is a safe haven for children. That's where they go, that's where they can feel quiet time, they're not in a home environment that's just driving them crazy. And sometimes the only smile they may get is from their teacher, their bus driver, or somebody in the school system. So I say all this to say that I am, I hope, I'm trying to put the system in place for Henry County to have a good connection, and thanks to Ms. Beasley, we were able to get threefold then, because I was meeting with them, and I, you know, I can counsel, but some of these kids need long-term, I mean, the five top issues in Henry County that I have experienced were truancy, but along with truancy, a lot of it is what's going on at home? What's going on with parents? It's just not they're not wanting to go to school, or they're not getting on the bus, there's no issue. Suicidal thoughts, I've, I've talked with seven different kids, and I made a third grader, y'all, you just think of a third grader this year that I talked with, that thought about killing himself. Inadequate clothing, housing, and hygiene, that is so detrimental to children in school when they come from a home, and one of my first reports was the bugs was crawling out of the bookbag of these little boys. And long story short, I guess my experience with DHR, I realized something's going on at home. I, you know, I can go visit in the home now with this, I'm, I'm going in the home and visiting. And when I got to that home, and that daddy wouldn't let me in the door, but I could see just a little in there, I alerted the, our local police department to watch that house, and two months later, sure enough, he was arrested, and they're back with their mom. So there's just a lot of things that you think, oh, Henry County's so little, it wouldn't have him here, but it does have him here. Depression, even young kids get depressed. And behavior problems at school, and a lot of times when they're acting out, one of the first cases was severe acting out, the report I got, and when I saw the names, I knew immediately why they were acting out. These children were sold when they were younger, they were sold by their daddy, you know? But teachers don't have time to hear all that, guidance counselors don't have time to hear all that. They have other things. So with me and mental health in there, I think that we are making progress. It may be slow, but I do think we're making progress. Did y'all have any questions?
I do. You just made a statement that teachers and counselors don't have time for all that. What can we train them? How can we train them to notice some signs? Because if we, if you can't see twenty-five hundred students, what are some signs that we can train them in professional development?
Threefold is going to do.
Yeah, threefold is going to do. And I am working on some forms this summer, like, that will give them some warning signs. I'm also working on a safety plan that we can put in place for like the guidance counselors. You know, when a child threatens suicide, you don't leave that child, you know, you got all these accommodations and things you've got to do right then immediately. So I'm, and I'll, I'll probably get with the legal and let her look at it, but I'm trying to do some plans to put in place to help them, because, and, and I think that between me helping them, and I, I know that my experience with DHR does help a lot, me helping them and threefold, I think we'll get there.
And not, not to jump on that, but it's not that they don't have time, they don't have the proper training.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Their science.
Yeah.
Well, and then, you know, they have the whole school that they're having on.
They're not trained in mental health.
Exactly.
That's not their background.
And so if we can give them, these are the signs to, to alert somebody so that we can get duty involved or recruit involved, that's, that's where it's at. It's not, it's not a timing, it's a, I'm not an expert in mental health.
No.
You know?
I think Henry County has made a huge step in having the mental health.
I think it has worked one or so far. Is that something that the school resource officers can be involved into, this type of training?
You could be.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Sure could. Well, he's been a great help to me, and I think we've sort of worked together on some cases this, already this year.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. We, we work in and in, Ms. Beasley and I, if anything, she ever needs and all, whatever resources I can provide, I, I try my best to do it.
Are we, are we seeing this in elementary schools more so than high schools? And if we are seeing an elementary school, that gives us an opportunity to track them. And then from tracking them, we can compile some steps and be more efficient in trying to deal with them as they're younger. Do we, is where's the more available, at high school or elementary school?
I think with middle school, middle school. I'm seeing more at the middle school. And I'm going to get with a state about putting a system, and it's called BARBS, and it sort of tracks social emotional.
Right, right.
And the older kids can put in their own information to these elementary-type questions.
Right.
And the younger kids, the teachers can observe them, and this is gonna help track for next year.
Right, that's great, that's great.
Wouldn't you feel like that it can start in elementary school? It show itself more in the middle school when they're kind of hitting those.
I think it's there when those hormones start kicking in and all. But like I said, I mean, a, a third grader this year talking about suicide, and then, you know, then he asked for me to come back to see him, and all he wanted was a police badge, you know? So I went to the chief of police, and I got him a little badge, you know, and it's just, we just don't know what these kids come from.
Thank you so much, you and all that you do.
But she mentioned, you know, some of the issues at home, do all of our schools have washing the flyers, or, you know, you know, they come in?
At my high school, they've had two little school students probably use us, and that's being a protection out there while they're young. They all be getting more than they want, they send more than they get too. Now, my question to you, how do you fix the problem of you doing contracts? And I love contracts, because I don't want to see how many people running around trying to find yourself, or, and, you know, it might be a problem deriving from the problem at every, if you're not getting any. So how do you fix the problem of when you do a lot of this sub, and the high school's gonna have a problem getting teacher, subteaching? How do you fix that problem? Because they're gonna have trouble, it's not gonna really help them a whole lot, because of their reputation, they have room buildings with invisible students.
We, I mean, you, and Mr. Brooks is here, you've got several that are loyal subs that come in.
Well, look at the track record now, I'm backing up, I'm going back four or five years.
Well, I mean, based off of?
You don't have, you don't have your teachers, you say, they don't work there.
And this past year, everybody had trouble getting.
Oh, I agree with that, I'm throwing that out, I'm just telling you. And I asked the school board to keep a record of when they asked for students, asked for our subteachers, how many came and how many didn't, so we'd have a look see as to how, what kind of problem we got here and what kind of problem we got there. There was never a record kept. There needs to be a record kept as to how many times I asked, I didn't get them, so we can take a look at what we need to do in a room situation.
We can do that. I mean, that's easy to, to pull, because like with Kelly, if it's un, unfielded, it will show that it's unfielded for that.
But they were.
So I can, I can bring that to another.
I would love to see that, because, because you know and I know, the reputation is out there, they're not coming.
So I'll, I'll be able to show you off of Kelly's records what was fielded and what was not fielded.
Make a note of that and present it with us.
Okay, I'll make it.
And then perhaps we can address the problem.
So that does field, as far as the low bid, they, they are due tomorrow to us, and so that will go on our July meeting. If you look, it's PCI technologies, I think I have mentioned to you all about us doing all of our exterior doors with key fobs, rather than having keys, so we're having keyless entry. That way, if someone is going to come into the building, they have to have their fob, and they go in through it, instead of having a key. Because a lot of times, what we have found is that human error, if you forget to lock the door back and something happens, it could be negligence on our part. But if you've got the key fob, then it, you just, you know, swipe it and go in, and it automatically locks the hunt. And if the door is open for so many minutes, then it will start buzzing to allow the, because it's all controlled, it can be controlled at your, the fingertips of your phone or your computer. And so this is money that we want to spend with our Esser, because we feel like this definitely is safety, and like I said... And, um, like I said, it, it's gonna cut down on human error. Uh, because we have had some issues that some discipline, um, you know, we've had some, some issues where kids got into places that were left unlocked, and if it was that a fob, because all exterior. And I, I think, you know, I've talked with our resource officers, our, you know, police, and, and they're one hundred percent behind this also, that, um, you know, we can use this and, if I only wanna give Ms. Wiggins a fob that works from nine o'clock to ten o'clock, because like we have when, um, Terminix comes in, then they can have it in it, because they usually come on Saturdays, and then you're not having someone have to meet them up at the building. And you give them access, or either you can say, nope, I'm killing it. So all teachers would, if they wanted to give out to their friend or whatever to go to the gym, then it would be dead during a time and their fobs wouldn't work, if that makes sense. Um, I wanted to also go back and mention what we have left that, um, are vacancies. We have, uh, two elementary positions, uh, we have a science position that's at Hadlin Middle, uh, a math at Abbeyville High, we'll now have a principal position. We'll have two special ed positions, one's at Abbeyville Elementary, one's at Abbeyville High School. We still have the, um, the H C B C. We have a band that's at Abbeyville High, and then we have a basic skills that's at Hadlin Middle School. Those are what we have left at this time. That's two elementary, one science, one math, a principal, two special ed, that's H C B C, which will now be a principal, band, and basic skills. Um, and now, and I think I had mentioned that in, uh, your house, Mr. Sanders come up, and we're gonna talk about the reopening, we have our meeting today at nine o'clock. And, uh, all of the administrators came in.
Sanders, this precaution, that precaution, and I think we're missing the key, key issue. We now got to figure out how many kids, this new strain of this virus, how many kids are vaccinated? Can we do some type of a, uh?
We can't ask them.
No, I mean, we can do some type of a, uh, encouraging, uh, program or something to get more kids. What percent now do we have vaccinated? I mean, you can do all that, but you're staying with it anyway. You, you're gonna have to have, try to get somewhere around seventy percent of the people vaccinated, twelve to eighteen. That is your ninety percent protection, and, and you need to do.
And that's apparent, you know?
I'm saying, can we do something to influence this? Can we push for?
I, I don't think, I maybe we can. They feel pressured to do that, and so I'm not having a reaction.
We can say that vaccination is a part of the brain at that age.
And you could actually, the nurses could actually set a mistake.
But it was totally, totally voluntary.
I know some schools that are encouraging and influencing and awarding, try to get that seventy percent of people vaccinated. Now, 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 thing is, now, I know.
Thank you for awarding kids, then, you know?
Now, uh, it's just awards available for whoever, you know, you bring a kid or whatever, but I'm just saying.
Maybe one child had a reaction like that, uh, and then we were, we were sitting there.
We're following the federal government, because they got signs everywhere, couldn't we go throughout the school system? And on the walls throughout? And put, and put, you know, something to encourage kids, but listen, all you're doing is not gonna stop it. Or you're just vaccinated. This new strain is really, really tough.
Well, I don't think that we can reward them for vaccinations or things of that nature.
Maybe they're awarding, but maybe, maybe do something to influence it, some kind of.
I don't know that we can influence.
I, I, I don't think you could influence.
I'm saying, you, you, the federal government got signs and commercials all over the place, you're just following their lead.
Well, you can let them know that those vaccinations are available, but it is a parent-to-parent, um, you know, that, that's, that's not, we can't get into that business.
No, I'm not, no, maybe not more, but I'm saying, you can, I was, if you follow the state government, they got a lot of commercials. And I, I think we need to go somewhere in that area.
All right.
And the last thing on page was just following the guidelines, ADPAs in the Alabama High School Athletic Association. If somebody has positive or they're close contacts, they're done for fourteen days. Uh, and you know, we had a couple sports scenes that happened too, you know, this year. A couple more basketball, uh, some volleyball, uh, and, and we played against the Saints, we did, but now for the most part, we had a very successful school year as far as keeping our schools open, and we addressed it when it came. Uh, and, uh, I mean, I, I was really proud of our, our staff, our teachers, our students, everybody, and everything they did, uh, to keep it open, because there's a lot of schools in the area that could not save it.
Shut down multiple times.
Some, some didn't come face to face to Laker Jenkins, you know? We had our students, and, and I think that's gonna pay dividends, we, and we have some learning loss, and we know it. And we're, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to really push that.
Our summer school has been very effective, I believe, the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, not going all week long, but doing the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday has been successful. Uh, I know that, I've been getting reports from the principals, um, on that. And so that's our plans, uh, for reopening.
Hey, Ms. Bigley, I'm sorry, I have one question too about that. Have you considered what you're going to do if a teacher has to be out for quarantine with their sick leave and paid? Because I know the state hasn't, doesn't have anything in place right now to warrant, but I mean, it's.
Well, I, and, you know, that can be something that I, I bring up, um, but you know, last year, we went through the end of the year, even passed the requirements.
And I think if they're vaccinated, they.
Yeah, vaccinated, um, they don't have to quarantine, but now if it's like maybe with a, that they're having, their child might have to quarantine, or something of that nature, then I think that we need to look at that again, because we know that it could come up, and we do have some money there that could, could be spent on some.
I mean, that's a big chunk if somebody has to be out either way, you know, for fourteen days. And if they don't have their sick leave, or even taken away their sick leave, or something that's basically under their control, out of their control.
What percentage of our, um, faculty staff have, have been vaccinated?
We're about half right now, we're about fifty percent. That, and you know, when I offered two, um, two times, I offered one that was in, uh, February, and then one that, uh, was in later February, one in earlier February, and I mentioned it today, that I thought about, because not all of our, uh, employees did, we'll have new employees coming in, and I would like to offer something to them. Again, I can't require them to, but, you know, I give them that option that if they'd like to, to be vaccinated, then we give them, you know? And which is a lot easier now to get a vaccination, whereas at that point, we were some of the first people to be able to get.
I still feel like it's more adults that don't get, uh, the vaccination than having a problem with the young, young.
The state of Alabama as a whole is very low, uh, one of the lowest that's vaccinated. Around forty percent.
Can I ask, make something clear, now, you said that a child that goes in the school next year will not be reprimanded for, or, or scheduled for wearing masks, not wearing masks.
Not wearing or wearing, we're gonna encourage them to wear masks, but no, you.
But that's not made out of a mandate, we're.
Right, okay, and we don't let parents in the school when they have an issue or something, or?
They can come in and be parents, but, and, and when they're a teacher, they're.
We're not going to winter and order them out like a hamburger.
Pick them up, take them out and eat, and bring them back, you know? That's what I would do.
We're trying to get back as normal as possible.
Okay, I just wanna know when somebody asks me something like that, I want.
And it was, I, there were no, uh, no exceptions made, because I, I, I had an issue last year, and I needed to meet with this last person. She said, when I, when I let the parents come in, I'll talk to you on the phone, and I was like, I don't understand. I didn't, I didn't get any, you know, any special treatment from, from working in the system. And I walked in the school every day getting mail, but I did not get any special treatment, didn't expect it. Uh, but I didn't realize that, because, you know, the high schools, we can't, we can't really say that, uh, because we have, you know, when, when we're dealing with transcripts and things like that, it, sometimes you gotta, you know, you gotta have visitors. And I'm a both high school and letting, so I wouldn't be really thinking about it, but, uh, I know our elementary schools didn't, didn't have it, you know, so.
I just, um, in order to give that, especially elementary, parents, not to say we're doing it wrong.
So we are not allowed that.
Yeah, I, I think if you don't, then you, you give it, you give it like you're trying to isolate them. And we don't wanna be looking that way, we wanna be open to as much, to, to as racist as possible, I didn't really do it.
Um, that's all that I have, Mr. Davis, I know, um, and I was gonna mention, uh, and I know that you had sent me a, a message uh, about the, um, bringing in the ASB. But now I cannot do that, and I, I consulted with, uh, Ms. Campbell, and that would have to be something that the board, um, was willing to do.
Well, Ms. Campbell, you sit right here now, you monitor these meetings, and you don't see nothing wrong.
I would say that, you know, there's always room for improvement in any board or, or any committee.
You did, you did not sit, you're sitting right there, you did not hear that, uh, Cheryl, denied me of an opportunity to vote.
I did not hear that.
When you say, in favor, all in favor, all, and then say, uh, no, you're leaving out a very, what all other board meetings have now incorporated. Abstain, you have to, you have to call on each member and give them an opportunity to vote in one, two, or three. Oppose is no, opposed is not abstain, then it says go yes, you can do that. Political people can do all either three, abstain, vote no or yes. Now, you cannot deprive, this, this has been in the course now, I'm not just saying this. You cannot deprive a board member politically elect an opportunity to vote. And you certainly cannot vote for him. I was voting for, someone voted for me, he voted no for me. I, that person, here's Mr. Crane, I'm letting, Mr. McCray, I'm loving him, yeah. But you cannot deprive a person of an opportunity to vote. We're gonna have to change our, our voting methods, to where you ask each individual, how do you want to vote? Abstain, now this, you can go to mobile, I can take you to a case, this, 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 if you wanna, if you wanna go there. Now, now, I, I love you like a sister, you're doing a great job, but now you need to catch up on this. You cannot do that. You have to go to each individual and ask them, how do you vote? You have to give these people an opportunity to vote. I was not given that opportunity, and that's an act of violation, and it can be proved.
Mr. Davis, uh, of course, there are many ways that you could have a meeting. But usually you ask, the, the, the most simple and general is, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
A A S B doesn't, A A S B doesn't do that, Ms. Campbell. We all went to a board mock meeting, nobody in here's been to board, I've been to board. That's not the way they do it, they don't recommend it that way.
There are, there are many ways to do it.
They don't recommend that, because you, you're leaving somebody out, you're leaving abstain out. And, and I was voting for it. They can improve them, I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm, listen, I'm through with it. What I'm saying is, oh, I'm telling you, they're gonna have to improve the problem that we have. This meeting is getting out of control and going to get further out of control if you do not allow people to vote. Abstain in politics is as big as no and yes.
Well, that's all that I have.
But now I got, I, I had some things I wanted to say in due labor, I'm gonna sum it up, just, in next meeting, I will, uh, I will elaborate on it more. But I, ever since I've been on the board, I've come to just about every organized meeting and stuff. I've never heard one board member sit down and ta- ask about the biggest problem that we have. The biggest problem we have in this school system is seventh and eighth grade at Alabama High School. That's the biggest problem we have, look at the data. Fifteen percent, this scantron test went down fifteen percent. Now, I know a lot of students, but I'm just gonna say, I got seven things I wanna talk about on this trip. But now, at some point, you're gonna have to go in, and you're gonna have to, uh, try to do something to help that situation. Now, if you talk to seven students, and I did, about this test we just took, they ain't care. They'll tell you, most of that material we ain't never seen, we haven't gotten it yet. So, so look at the data, it reaffirms that there is a problem.
We'll get our data from the eighth of in August.
Let me tell you, I'm, I'm giving you the data in there. Okay, you have a twenty percent proficiency in math. I don't know, I, I'm not hearing nobody talk about how we can improve that. And, and the A A S B came down and looked at Mr. Fattie and said, listen, you have to, uh, at least try to close that gap. Out of your twenty percent, hell, it's like forty-nine, fifty percent. It's hell within the seventh and eighth grade, because elementary kids, kids are basically the same. When they go to the seventh and eighth grade, we're not, we're losing them.
Okay, and I, I wanna show them the data, I'll give them the data until you.
You didn't, wait a minute, you, you the one, and you, Mr. McCray, you said that it wasn't twenty percent, and it wasn't twenty, thirty percent.
I gave you data, and I gave you data from the state.
Scorecard.
And it has State Department of Education.
I'm trying to tell you, Ms. Bean, and you know it, you can go to the Facebook, it's a scorecard that the state has, and it'll give you twenty percent math proficiency and thirty percent English proficiency. Now, I know that for a fact, and I'm telling you, nobody has said one word about how we're gonna improve that situation. We have not been able to keep math teachers, they're gone, none of them gone, none of them you'll go. Everybody leaves unhappy, I just wanna tell you now, I got documents, and they are unhappy. Now, I'm just saying, we don't hold the principal accountable.
And I have said multiple times, that when you say parents that are not happy, I've said send them to the office.
Did they come to you when you canceled that, uh, uh, graduation?
But that was about graduation, that was not about academics.
I was out there, and I heard all kind of words and statements made, so let me go. I don't wanna go about that, all I'm saying is that, if you got these problems.
Multiple people that were in this room.
I would love to talk, since you said you was finished.
Well, no, I just said there were multiple people in this room.
I'm about through, I just wanna talk. Let me finish, I've been through it, you just let me go. There are multiple problems, we don't hold the principal accountable. He coaches basketball instead of trying to implement, uh, uh, study programs. And, and listen, and, and Mr. Sanders, Mr. Sanders.
In August.
Wait a minute, let me just, I've got two more straight now. And see, when you start talking about the problems, the real problems, people start packing stuff ready to go. Now, let me tell you this, now let me say this, I'm talking data.
You're talking.
Data, data. Now, now, we have seven problems going on, and we don't wanna address any of them.
We'll bring the data to the meetings again, and we'll look at it again. I'll be glad, but we're not gonna talk just hearsay.
I'm giving out data, about twenty percent math proficiency and thirty percent English proficiency, which is about fifty percent less than our counterparts down here. And I'm talking about, we're not able to keep teachers, and we're talking about parents, there are no stakeholders. And you know, and, and listen, I could sit there and be just, yes, 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 I can't do that. Because these kids are in my community, I know these kids, these kids are related to me, they are not learning fifty percent of what they should be learning. These are some very intelligent kids, we have some very great teachers in the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade, but when these students get up there, they're not ready. They have got so far behind, these teachers have gotta bring them so far until they're, now listen, what's. They have got so far behind, these teachers have gotta bring them so far until they're, now, now, listen, what's hanging over your head? And I'm telling you right now, is only failure list. That's hanging over your head, Ms. Bean, and I'm telling you something now. As bad as they did in math, it's math and English in seventh, eighth grade and it's that test for the level. I just wanna tell you something. You in danger of being on the failure list because last year you just missed it just like that. Level 3 is safe. Matter of fact, there was some schools who was on the failure list that did better than, than we did in seventh, eighth grade. Now, let me tell you something else. The A P program has been eliminated. Okay, now, now, and listen, I got on the board not to just sit here and say, yes, sir, no, sir. We need some improvement. Now, you can say what you wanna say about the A P program. Now, my daughter was, was, I got the Presidential Scholarship and all numerous, all the cause of that A P program and Mr. Head. Now, we are gonna have to re-implement that A P program. It's in the envelope, why can't it be in the envelope? Why we gotta double standard every time I look up and look down? I am here to tell you that we have gotten approved at the view of high school and the main problem is seventh, eighth grade. And if they hit the failure list, it's gonna be a drag on the whole school system. And, and, and I regret and resent people trying to shut me up when I'm trying to talk about the real problems that this school system has and nobody, not even a board member that's in that district has addressed it. And I have no personal problems, period. But we have a problem. I got these, I got relatives, I got people in my community and they are not learning what they should be learning. We're not holding the principal accountable. Let me tell you what he's doing. He's out there coaching basketball and he needs to implement some programs to help his students. He's out, he's waiting, he's going back and forth to Montgomery. Let me finish. He's going out, back and forth to Montgomery and in the courtroom over to spend all this time trying to put somebody's business away. I'll be out there trying to keep, uh, the program of these kids.
Okay, I, I'm done with what I needed, so I appreciate it.
That's right. They shut me off when I'm starting to talk about the real problems. Pack your bags up, get ready to go.
We're not gonna talk about someone's character.
I'm not attacking nobody's character. I'm giving you facts. You're not holding this person accountable. And that's why Alabama High School is in such a bad shape today. You got a double standard, you got a double standard.
I have a double standard, it's.
A double standard between Abbeville, Abbeville High School and Helen High School. And the proficiency gap proves it. Look at it. It's on the scorecard in the state. Just look at it. And you have done nothing.
That's all that I have. Thank you all.